So, welcome. Hello, everyone. Thanks for bringing questions tonight. This is our letter of January 24th. I wrote on behalf of our Central Committee. It is still unanswered. Our concerns have not been addressed. Here is a follow-up letter I wrote to you on the 13th of February. That is still unanswered. These are the questions I went to Helena to put before you in the Judiciary Committee. I'm not going to take your time tonight. I know you're tired. But really, I'm going to be out with a lot of people at our county.
And every single one of these questions is answered in the emails and the attachments that I have sent that you've been CC'd in on.
Not to me.
Yes, you have. I'll resend you the emails, but I have answered it. As far as specifically, everything that is in this packet answers these questions. There are no... But when I get an email that says something like, "Time immemorial rights are nothing but Indian folklore and legal fiction," like was said on the record in the committee at my hearing?
That's right.
And you believe that?
I believe it was given to us by an authority on Indian law and court decision, et cetera. So...
It's legal fiction and Indian folklore, though?
Perhaps it is.
Okay. Well, I don't know how to respond to that, Senator. I really don't. I tried my best in my emails and my attachments, and then the Attorney General evaluating and answering those questions. I did my best. I don't know how else to do it.
Well, I appreciate that the letters that you wrote to Larry Dolson were forwarded to you. Secondhand is how I received them, okay? Also, there are two people over here who have their hands up almost from the beginning and have not been recognized. A couple too.
Okay.
You could be a little more respectful, Chad.
Respect the answer.
You really should. You wouldn't talk to your mother like that, and you wouldn't like me talking to your mother.
I did just fine.
Thank you.
Let's talk, Colm, if that makes sense.
I just got a question on the end. I think it should be yes or no.
Get that on. We've got a question over here.
You need to sit down there and keep your mouth shut if you would, please.
Okay, I'll shut it. Go on, guys. Let's do it. Save us all a billion dollars for court costs.
And at the end of the question, you depend on how it's answered. It is the short follow-up. Let's say there's an irrigator off the reservation outside of Lincoln County, and he's got a couple of centipets. And let's say we go through three or four years of drought. Can the feds, through the tribes, call his water because of lack of upstream flow?
It would depend on where you're talking about.
Where? Anywhere.
There is... The one place where it could happen, and it would be in a... Well, there's 47 water users that are upstream from the Stillwater water right that is in the off-reservation that could be called within a two out of 10 year with this compact. But the thing is, is that the hydroelectric water right that is on that same river is above what that water right is. So, the hydroelectric water right would call that person before the tribal water right would. So, the situation... So, let's just say that there isn't a dam there. If there wasn't a dam, there wasn't a water right that's been existing there since like 1918, I think it is, or 1904, maybe. That water right, which is superseded just because its volume would hit before the tribal one because it's down here. But the answer is no, because this water right is going to hit it before this water right would.
Well, but generally speaking, if it's a hybrid, then wouldn't that water be upstream? Maybe it's why when it generates electricity...
Water comes downhill, and the way the first-in-time, first-in-right process works is if you are upstream and you have an upstream flow right, so...
It's upstream.
So, I'm saying that that's the one case that I can...
So, there's no other case off the reservation where they could be?
Well, there's an existing right. That's why there's no yes or no answers to a lot of this. There's 2,000 CFS right now to the Milltown Dam, right? That is, through court settlement, that is inside of this compact. It was already adjudicated, I'm sorry, litigated, and the settlement of that was that the water was either going to go to the state of Montana or the tribe. That was what the judge ruled. What the compact is, instead of doing the 2,000 CFS, which is what that water right was, they took 1,200 CFS instead, and they broke it up into a 700 and a 500, which actually limited the existing call that there would be, but it didn't eliminate it all the way. So, you know, to say that after this compact is passed that those guys couldn't get called because of that, I can't say that because that wouldn't be absolutely true. Is it less than it is today? Yes, because they produce the...
But you're saying that because of the compact, these people would get called and watered in because of...
Yes, yes. Instream flow, yes, already.
Chad?
Before I ask my question, Chad has a question. Oh, well, I have a very simple one. You, Phil, as both of you, each of you, have said several times that Lincoln County is out of the compact. We are not to be affected by any of the rules or whatever the compact manifests. But I hear this word basin being around, and that makes me very nervous because the DNRC has us in the basin with Clark's Fork. And the people at the meeting in which I learned this were not in the mood to hear any kind of protestation that there was nothing agreeable, shall we say, with the water in the Clark's Fork and the water in the Kootenay. We have a big divide and some smaller ones between. And I'm wondering, are we still safe in Lincoln County?
Well, there's... The way the water adjudication process works is that there's about 40 basins west of Townsend, all right? I hear... Trying to understand where they may file these primatificia claims, you know, conservatively, you can say 35 to 40. Are they going to file on every single one? I'm not sure. They could file all the way. If you look at the maps that they're going to be using in court, it goes from Idaho to Townsend. I believe that... But to get to your question about the basins, that's why I'm saying basins. It's all these different basins. The water court adjudicates these basins. We're almost to a preliminary temporary decree that we're going to get to in 2020, but we can't even secure these water rights for these individuals until we get a final decree, which is out there in 2028. So, the only way that we're going to be able to get a final decree is with the settlement of the compact, number one. And number two, we're not out of the compact. We're in the compact. What I said, and my apology if you misinterpreted, or I didn't say it clear enough. We are... We're not going to have any water users that are impacted by the ratification of the compact, is what I'm saying.
I didn't hear it. What?
There's no water users that are going to be impacted by the strains that we are including in the off-reservation plan of this. Now, you have to, you know, should the dam be removed, we're also going to be moving everybody that lives along the Kootenay River in Bonners Ferry, and, you know, we've got a lot more to worry about than 400 acres of arid land. But in that case, in that case, there's 27 water rights that could be impacted. But again, it's the Voltrout and the ESA that is likely going to determine the outcome of that regardless, kind of like Milltown Dam with that water right that I just talked about. It's going to be called anyways. There's a call underneath of it. This was going to happen before this happens. And there's a lot of that. But the off-reservation, there's 14 Murphy rights that are already existing rights, an official life and park zone, that we're going to give co-ownership to the tribe on. We're also going... And those are in-stream flow rights, have been since the '70s. We're also giving eight time immemorial rights. Half of them are in Lincoln County. They're just in a place where they're not going to impact any current water user.
Right now.
Well, if... I don't know a whole lot of development going up in any of those drainages because it's all surrounded by federal land.
No, Chad, is the... We're in Clark's Fork Basin.
No, we're in the Kootenay Basin.
We are now in Clark's Fork.
The water plan, I think you're referring to the water plan.
That's correct.
When they were putting together the water plan, the areas that we were going to focus on, they put the Kootenay in with the lower Clark Fork because we were geographically situated in a way that worked best for us to talk about both at the same time. The water plan is nothing but that, though. It's a plan, and it has, it really has not a whole lot of teeth because they don't ever do anything. I think it's just a waste of time or anything.
Well, one point.
But I'd like to get to a couple other questions.
Yes, but I just have...
Steve, you had your hand up.
Well, I just felt that since I've been referred to numerous times, I'd like to, you know, there's part of it's question, part of it is my opinion. For the record, we did, in fact, many of us get together when we first heard about this. I hold and control for many, many people, some of the largest water rights in this whole end of the state. When I first heard about this, it was a major concern. It was something that I knew absolutely could not happen. Because of the economic potential for our county, it absolutely was not going to be able to happen. Now, I'm not negotiating, nor was I ever negotiating, in behalf of the county. My position in this was because of the position that I stand for in an irrigation district. And, you know, in the very beginning, those of us who in fact were in this process, Mike was, Chad was, I was, Scott was, the commissioners were, we took a very strong stand in having no clue where this compact was going to go. It was impossible at that time to determine what the outcome of this process was going to be. Now, my position has still not changed, even though there's been a lot of factual evidence. There still is a lot of factual evidence that does not, in my humble opinion, support the passage of this thing. So, even though, yes, we did, and many of you people here in Lincoln County have heard me say this over and over and over again, as has Chad. Our position was somewhat safeguarded for the time being, I believe. I think that the potential that this not being in continuance is very, very serious. One of the things that we can't control is what takes place in the main stem of the Kootenay across the Canadian border. That's a huge thing. There's a lot of answers, questions that cannot be answered by we the people of Lincoln County. I believe that... And of course, I get a lot of calls from, in fact, folks that your father has gone to speak to, the Great Lakes Timber Professionals. I get calls from people all over the United States saying, "You guys need to get this right because the precedence that's going to be set through this compact is going to have far-reaching effects throughout our entire nation." That concerns me a huge amount. Now, I know that the people that you're referring to, Chad, have formed a legal opinion, and I respect that. I too have sought legal opinions from lots of people who disagree with that. So, the big question is, are they right or are we right? The only thing that I can, in my own presence and in the people that I represent, I have to think that we've fought a lot of great wars with the people of America on very basic principles. And I think that this is a war that I must stand in principle on the same stance as I did in the very beginning. Now, is that going to be correct? Nobody really knows. But I can see the potential of this thing passing, not being able to continue to protect we, the people of Lincoln Counties, of course, is our first priority. But the folks who live on the reservation, the folks who live in these other counties, and you're right as far as Sanders County, today, there's not a lot of potential change because of the compact. Who knows where the thing is going to go? But I think that I would have to stand on principle. And, you know, I certainly respect everybody's position, but that certainly has got to be the position that I take, and I just simply have to continue with that. You know, I trust that... One of the things that I've seen is some animosity, a lot of enemies being created over this thing, and that's not a good thing. We need to continue to try and move forward in a manner that's going to be good for all of us. I... My opinion is that through the passage of this compact, the federal government is in fact going to hold those waters in reserve or in trust for the tribes. There's just a lot of things that in the stroke of a pen or in a very quick moment of decision could change, and this is forever. This is a document that you've said, and everybody knows, is forever. We need to absolutely get this thing right. And I don't know that we've necessarily put in the time or the understanding to really get it right. So, you know, I'm quite concerned about the continuance of it, and I was pretty happy when we were all on the same team. And, you know, it couldn't have made, it couldn't have given me a better day than the day that you was in Chris Tweetin's face saying, "This thing truly is dead on arrival." And I still stand on that. I just cannot, I just cannot, in my best judgment, think that I would be able to approve the thing moving forward. Thank you.
I agree with Steve. I feel very, very uncomfortable, especially about forever because things are subject to change. I see things happening too much. Even in the Judiciary Committee in Helena, where they voted in favor of it, there was people that actually said, "This is not perfect. This is not perfect." Well, no, it's not perfect, but it's going to be forever regardless, and you signed it anyway. And even today, when I got an email, it was an email Western Governors Association, 19 states involved, and they are in a state of flux. They don't know exactly who to deal with pertaining to water. Forest Service is still in the process of quantifying the water and the sources and so forth, and who is supposed to be making these decisions? Should they come from the state or the federal, or should it be the tribes? And then I start thinking about the UNO that has been set up to handle all this water. You wonder why it is that our state basically is handing over the water for the management of a small group of five people on a reservation, inexperienced people on a reservation. And then you go back to what is the purpose of it all? Why is there a need for a compact for the tribes? Because they're citizens just like we are, and the water belongs to the state, and the state is supposed to have fair distribution of water. It's been a nice system. Everybody had water. So, why does a reservation have to be treated differently? Is it because of race? And it was for the purpose of the reservation. And then you have to look at what is the purpose? I've asked many times. What is the definition of the purpose of the reservation? The purpose of the reservation back in pioneer times was to protect the Indians from the settlers and the settlers from the Indians. They were killing each other, so they gave them a home. Well, this doesn't exist. The purpose has changed. So, why do we have to go through all this rigmarole of now, just because the Indians have to be assured of water, all of a sudden, all of our water is in jeopardy? Why does it upset the whole African? And at the time when the Indians, during the Indian Reorganization Act in 1934, the first ones in the whole United States to jump on that opportunity, just write their own constitution, form their own government, was the Salish Kootenay, the first ones. And now there's 556 reservations throughout the United States that have followed suit. And what do they want to do? It just, it seems like there's, everything is in a state of flux, and yet, we, with an inexperienced group of legislators trying to figure out what this is all about, and all of us little hydrologists trying to figure it out, and we're making a decision in Montana of taking the, getting consent to the tribes to take over the water and jeopardizing the citizens of the state, and this will be the pilot program for not only our other reservations here in Montana, but the entire country. What is it all going? Is it going to be forever? I'm true.
Take one from this side, and, you know, as far, yes, it's a settlement. Settlements are not precedents for other things to... My precedent is a precedent is a precedent. There's a lot of case law about that, too, I can provide for you because I asked those same questions.
Well, the case law, the historic treaties and so forth were supposed to evaporate with the 1934 reorganization.
As I said in my opening series, that is one of the things, one of the questions that could be taken all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court is whether or not they have. Now, in Namen, they said that no, it is not. So, that's what the Montana Supreme Court did say. I can't remember what year that was. Could that be appealed? Yes, it could. Would we, you know, what do we gain and how long to take amongst the other things that we're going to be litigating over? In the meantime, I come right back to, you know, everybody have a lot of expendable cash? Who has water rights in this room? Can I see a hand? Who has water rights? Hey, you all, you all, you all want to go read you to take your water?
Give us that 54 million. We'll start it.
Yeah, but it's unconstitutional to give the money to...
To the end of it? To give to the tribe? It's unconstitutional?
No, it's not unconstitutional to give to the tribe, but it's unconstitutional to give individual citizens money from the purse to defend their property. That's unconstitutional.
Class action.
Okay, we have one over here, and then we'll go back over here.
Well, I understand one thing. If we go to adjudication, I'll probably go to the Ninth Circuit, right?
Excuse me?
If we go to adjudication, I'll go to the Ninth Circuit.
Well, it would, it depends on, there's a couple of different ways that...
If that's the case, we lose.
Well, Ninth Circuit, yeah, I mean, but, you know, there is, there are a couple of, there's a couple of opinions that even if the Ninth Circuit decision was not in our favor, that we would get certiori and get standing. The problem is, is when you really look at a lot of the case law, a lot of it's already been denied. And so, I don't like our odds.
I'm going to go a little rattled here for a second. On residential land, how much water does non-Indian landowners get?
The non-Indian landowners will get, if you're an irrigator on project, there's on project, there's off project, there's...
Arrange, correct.
Well, the compact, the revised compact with the adaptive management provisions in it allows for them to get their historic consumptive use of the water.
And if they need more, they can go to court.
No, they won't have to go to court. The adaptive management provision in the compact, that's that delivery right. They can change the river diversion allowances now, which they couldn't do before. The previous compact locked you into a certain amount of water, and then made you dismiss your claims to co-ownership of that water. This compact gives you the delivery right based on historic consumptive use, which is going to be part of the money in the compact right up front, that $8 million, is to measure that water, to make sure that they're getting the water that we promised them. And then another part of the money is to use to improve some efficiencies of, you know, we have a lot of dilapidated equipment in there. But they can get that water, and we're going to be cutting off with this compact, we'll be cutting off all discussions of the Voltrout because U.S. Fish and Wildlife says, "As long as you're going to be improving the project and improving the in-stream flows because of the efficiencies that you're going to garner in some of the improvements, we'll accept this and we'll not move forward with the Voltrout." But you also have the ability in this compact for that person, even with the delivery right. So, they've got their delivery right, they've got wet water. If they think that they could get more water, if they want to go irrigate another 40 acres and they, but they don't have the water to do it, they can go adjudicate and put their claims in court and fight through it, just like everybody else has. My question is, why would we want to make everybody from Idaho to Townsend go back through it, too? I'm giving them the opportunity to go pursue their adjudicative claims, just like everybody else has since 1979. But why make everybody have to start over, too? Because that's what the off-reservation settlement is about. They are conceding a lot of places where they would file claims. Lincoln County is one of those areas where they would file a lot of claims, and I believe that they would be more successful here than they would east of the Continental Divide, for example. But make no mistake, even if they file, even to a, you're going to get standing. That's what primatification means. So, even if they don't win, you have to hire an attorney. That's what we're talking about, a billion and a half dollars coming from the folks that have already went through the process. Why drag them back in? That's the part of this that is a policy decision is very, it's very difficult. I mean, I agree. But when you're mitigating any harm, and you're able to keep folks out of court, and you're able to make sure that people who you said were going to get the water get the water, and you allow them to go adjudicate their claims if they want, that's a pretty good deal. And that's why I'm supporting it.
Chad, just one quick comment here. But if we're looking at litigation, if the people aren't happy with it, litigation, the tribes aren't happy with it. We're looking at litigation in neither direction. There is another option. I mentioned the state law earlier, the law that I didn't feel like it was being followed. If you went back and followed that law, where it said that it is necessary to coordinate local, state, and federal water resources, the greatest economic benefit to the people of Montana can be secured only by the sound coordination of development and utilization of water resources. I don't think I'd even bother with a reserved water rights in a compact commission. You can coordinate the county and municipalities with the tribes, with the state, with the feds, and between coordination, if you want 10 acre feet and I want 10 acre feet, and 19 acre feet is all that exists, we're both going to have to settle our coordination to each take nine and a half acre feet instead of 10. Work that out through coordination between the various government entities, and I can't see that anything needs to be litigated because it will all be in agreement by the time it's done. I said we got a deadline going up in July. That deadline was set by the legislature, and that happened to be really good because the legislature's in session right now. They can address moving that deadline by a couple of years to give time to work through it. Do it the way the state has laid out deposits and procedures. Do it correctly. Everybody's satisfied, and then you can have it per equal justice. That's all I can say. There is another option.
I just agree with you.
Wait, Rita?
Finally. First of all, just a couple of statements, and then I'll ask a few questions. Piggybacking onto Steve and then Clarice, I have been against this from the very beginning, and I confess to being a rabble-rouser who got the opposition in the Flathead County. I, you know, I can't keep my mouth shut about this. I'm just so opposed. As I see it, looking at the Montana Constitution and looking at Montana water law, I see this as a potential federal taking of rest state sovereign rights. I can quote to you the Montana Constitution, just like most of us here can. Okay, that's one statement. Coercion, being advertised by this special organization, FARM, which if you follow, it stands for Farmers and Ranchers of Montana. If you follow the money on these expensive, beautiful mailings that we're getting, as well as the radio agile fund, that the funding comes from the tribes and to that state budget. If it's a monetary issue before our state legislature, typically, the bill is first presented in the House because money's attached, not in the Senate. Chad, just like earlier mentioned, I'm going to commend you because right now you are under more attack than any other legislator in the state of Montana. This is a very, very, very contentious issue. You're a change agent, and you're at a point where our commander in chief is going to commend you for the change that you have brought to Montana, just like he's bringing change to this United States. If you're going to run for election next time, maybe you should run as a Democrat. You'd certainly have Obama's endorsement. Okay, going on to the next. I'm sorry. I could be...
The man's still working.
Exempt wells, exempt wells used to be 100 gallons per minute. And I went to that meeting of DNRC so many years ago just to see, just to see the DNRC in action. I now understand that exempt wells are now 135 gallons per minute. If the tribes are going to be given the senior water rights, now, and we have, I know about the irrigators, I know about the hydrologic system, all of that. So, will it be, if the tribes can call, can they call on wells that are under 35 gallons? That's a question. Also, I was going to ask, just, you know, off the record, I want to know if a non-consumptive water right can be called. Did it have to be consumptive? So, could the hydroelectric system up on Stillwater there, could that be called? I mean, can only consumptive uses of water, you know, on the water rights? I don't see any reason they would want to call a non-consumptive water right, just for beneficial use. Okay, so questions. How is the compact going to better, better Montana? Why did the state present the idea of off-reservation in the first place to the tribes? It was not the tribes' idea, the idea came from the state. And who in the state? Was it from the DNRC who was shirking on their responsibilities? And why did that idea get thrown to the tribes by the state?
Correct question.
The, the draft that we looked at was, and, and I guess to answer the first part of the question, the tribes have already, back in 1979, and I haven't seen them, I haven't seen with my own, my own eyes, but in discussions with some legislators who were around back then and with some of the compact commission staff, they were already filing in areas that were off-reservation. They had already, they, they had notices of intent. They had, they were letting people know where they were going to be filing. They've been talking about them.
Down in the Hamilton area, down in there, or wherever they are?
I can't, I, I said I haven't seen them, but I, all I've said, what I'm, the reason I'm telling you that is because they have had the intent to file for off-reservation claims since 1979. It isn't a state, an idea that the state forced on them. The one thing that I was unhappy with, and I would say that Representative Cuff was also unhappy with, when I went to the, the meeting in Paulson in 2012 and asked, where, where do these come from? It was, it was done by somebody in the regional office of Fish, Water, and Parks who had taken basically all of the, the potential habitat for bull trout, which is, you know, the, the species that the tribe is really, they, they really, really care about that species of fish culturally. They thought that that would be, you know, that they would, they would like that offering, if you will, to them.
And I remember that main piece coming back and saying, yeah, but the upper Jaco region would be great spawning area for the bull trout, there is no water.
But the thing to, the thing to take into consideration about that is the seventy-two streams that have that potential for that fish is where they're going to file this July, and July 30th, or June 30th, by June 30th, that's where they're going to be filing. It's going to, they're, that's where they're going to be making their claims. That's where everybody's going to have to go get an attorney to defend because they have primation standing. And, but the tribes have had the intent of doing that forever. And, and they actually, when I was, when we were talking, like, they were like, well, you know, we can settle this, this, we can ratify this without doing off-reservation. We'll just file after we get done. Which, which is not a term that, but that would, but that does not fulfill the purposes of the state's charge for negotiating and concluding those rights. So of course that wasn't something that could be considered.
Senator, my name is David Passiore.
I know who you are, David.
Real estate agent and I came to Montana because it's the watershed state. I'm from originally California, always wanted to be in the mountains. And I've always seen federal overreach and encroachment in California area to cause me to want to be in the mountains from an early age. But I finally made it here in Montana, the watershed state, and it is the watershed state, especially western Montana. And as a Realtor, in 2012, when the compact was first introduced as the first lay, which is, which was the water users' document, which showed that the irrigators on the reservation, I'm from Santa Ignatius, I live in Lake County, I'm an irrigator, also a Realtor, and property rights are a big deal. Since 1989, I've been learning and protecting and working in the real estate industry. And so from the very beginning, I followed this water users' agreement that was being put out to the public. We were given two weeks to respond with public comments back in April of 2012. And in two weeks, there was a quick scramble, someone spent four thousand dollars, sent out a bunch of letters and we got a lot of irrigators to come to a meeting. And in that meeting, the result was damage control. Damage control from the folks who are running the Flathead Joint Board of Control for the past twenty years representing irrigators, who have colluded over the past ten years, this is what I found over following all of this. And so my point is, is this has become quite the political process. And in 2013, actually 2012, the meeting that Steve Curtis referenced, that you were at, in the face of Chris Tweeten, who is the chairman since 1985, I believe, made a career, he's the chairman of the Reserve Water Rights Committee. You were in his face, you told me, don't worry about him, because he was shutting me down, not allowing me to speak, because I have been filming each of their road shows, is what I call the road show, two road show. And, and so in that, you protected me. I'm like, cool, all right, who's this guy? Senator Chaz Vincent, right on. And in 2013, the compact failed, even though Dan Saltman was quoted as saying, still against it to other legislators. This is a done deal, you should get on the right side of the fence. And it failed, a divine thing. What has happened in the last two years, from what I can see, is that the governor is running the show. And the governor controls the Attorney General. And when the Attorney General is, is told to respond to a legal opinion, whether this is constitutional or not, he takes a long time to do so. And finally comes out to say that this is a constitutional agreement, it's not a taking, because we've provided a certificate of entitlement. Now, we're talking about on-reservation, folks, where this should be at, shouldn't be on the off-reservation areas. But on the reservation, Dwayne Meecham, I don't know if you know this, five months ago, he's the attorney for the Bureau of Indian Affairs. He said, the irrigators who have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand plus irrigated acres, of which ninety percent are owned by non-trivial members, probably purchased much of it from, Dwayne Meecham said that the irrigators do have a federal reserve water right. Why hasn't the compact commission defended that water right for the irrigators? Why, is it true that the water rights that are defined in the thousand-plus pages of abstracts in this compact, is it true that the ownership shows the United States government? And then the beneficial owner is the tribes? And if sometime in the future, the tribes become nullified because of congressional act, does this federal jurisdiction that will now prevail over most of western Montana, will that revert back to Montana?
No.
No, it will not. So really, the threat is not litigation, the threat is the federal government, whether it be through the biological opinion letter, the bull trout, or now the tribes, or the EPA, or whatever else. So where's the line going to be drawn if this document gets passed? The Indians can't speak out, they lose their jobs, they lose their children, they lose out on their leases. They can't afford to speak out, we've seen this, we've documented it. So my question over the last two years, do you really want your name associated with this unprecedented taking of the citizens' rights to have Montana Water Court represent them? This, the, the taking of property rights, when there's an irrigation water right that exists, now it's going to be a certificate of entitlement? The jurisdiction of Montana water will now be federal jurisdiction? No beneficial use at all for most of Montana, western Montana? Is that the legacy you're looking to have?
If, well, number one, you're incorrect on a lot of your model on there. If, and so I disagree fundamentally with a lot of your, a lot of your assertions. This issue though, in getting back to what Rita was saying, it is an apolitical issue. If you, as far as the Attorney General, the Attorney General, we have a Republican Attorney General, he doesn't answer to the governor. He, we, he has to represent agencies in decisions. And in this case, he is, he's going to represent the DNRC. And actually, all of these water-based claims that we're going to be dealing with, we're going to be having the Attorney General representing the DNRC, looking for an abandonment right for somebody who can't show historic use of the water and that they have a positive beneficial use. So the state will be taking that water back. Now, as far as, as far as what, when I took this on, and thank you for the compliment, because I, I, I was very much frustrated, very passionate about this process when I first got into it. Still am, as you can, if you can't tell. But it was because I wasn't, I did not understand a lot of the case law, I did not understand a lot of the negotiations. I made with the Water Policy Committee and working with the Attorney General's Office and others that were on a negotiating team, we made significant revisions inside of this compact to a lot of really important questions. And we still haven't talked about a lot of them. I thought that we were going to talk about the revisions. What's different about this compact last? What made you change your mind from going from here to there? There's, there's several things, but we talked about a couple of them. The water use agreement being gone. You said, why would I be taking something from them? The Attorney General said it was because of an entitlement, that's the reason that, no. They can go adjudicate their claims, David, they can go adjudicate their claims. They can go adjudicate their claims, just like every other citizen in the state of Montana.
And that's what the Montana Land and Water Alliance, which is newly incorporated, is attempting to do. And the letter from Richard Sins, an attorney out of New Mexico, who has beat...
And, and Mr., Mr. Sins, if he was practicing in Montana, would be disbarred.
He gets two cases to practice outside of state law.
That's pretty rare.
And I don't believe I or you are going to try.
You, you go ask any practicing lawyer in water court law, and they would make, they would make the motions to have him disbarred if he was practicing in Montana. Absolutely.
I'll ask him to reply to you, Chad.
Yeah, certainly.
Can you have that on film? Could I just have...
The one in the back?
No, I won't. Well, I have several questions, but I think one thing that everybody has to know, this water compact ultimately will probably result in another way the federal government will end up taking over our water. And our, through the Corps of Engineers right now, deploying all of this water. And they have already, I'm dealing with them directly on that. And I know where they're going and what they're doing. And BEQ at the federal level is part of it. And that's, those things are still not settled by this. And in fact, the Indians, and I used to be a tribal attorney for the Blackfeet. And I know a great deal about it. In fact, I helped the Blackfeet develop their constitution. I helped them get, get their first of case law, or not case law, but all of their initial laws that they put in place. And I'm familiar with that. But I also know who's going to end up making the decisions that the tribes rely on. And it isn't going to be the tribes. It's going to be a lot of hungry lawyers, and the Equal Justice Act may be involved. We already talked about that, there's a huge impact from that. And it will be the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And then, because of them, it will be the federal environmental people. And it will be the Corps of Engineers. And it's a huge impact and a huge danger. And I don't know that this deals with it at all. The other thing I don't know, and I'm not too familiar with all of the, what's going on here, but the issue of what about future water rights? Can I go out and drill a well on my property and get a water right after this is passed?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and what, what regulatory, if you want to talk to me, I couldn't agree with you more that the Clean Water Act and the, the way that they're defining adjacent and the way that they're expanding their regulatory reach and their jurisdiction through the rule that they're promulgating right now is a train wreck and one of the biggest threats to private property rights in the nation. Wholeheartedly agree with you. This compact gives no regulatory anything to anyone. The DNRC still regulates the water, we're talking about an in-stream water right.
Well, they, they, they are making to protect me right now, although they agree that they, they don't...
So, all right, so you're a lawyer. So what is, what is, what is the, what is the, what permit are they going to use for an in-stream flow right to object to using full access to justice underneath it?
I'm not sure, but I think I could be creative enough to figure out a way to do it.
Okay. O'Neil?
Yes. I have two concerns. One, it appears to me that the irrigators on the reservation are substituting a property, a property right under water right and in the irrigation district, which they have ownership interest in, and changing those for a delivery right. And the delivery right is lesser than the property right, the water right they have. And also is subject to the BIA approval, BIA's commandments on it. The reason I say that the property, the water right, the delivery right is less than the water right, because in the compact, on Article three, G three, page thirty-two, it says, "A person who has both an entitlement to the delivery of water from the Flathead Irrigation, Indian Irrigation Project, and a water right arising under state law to serve the same acreage, may only protect from call by entering into a consensual agreement pursuant to this Article three, G three, a total quantity of water equal to the lesser of the annual F-I-T quota for a given irrigation system or an alternative, alternate value for each acre served, irrespective of whether the water applied for each acre is pursuant to that person's by the irrigation project delivery right or that person's water right arising under state law." So that appears to me their delivery right is going to be less than what the water right they possess first before this compact is ever written.
You're, you're, Jerry, you're referring to, you're not referring to, that, that language you're reading from is off-project water that individuals who are off the irrigation project can access?
The person has both an entitlement to the delivery of water from the Flathead Irrigation Project, that's on?
They're, they're currently right now getting, they're currently right now using some of the water. And under this compact, they're not, it's, and I can, I can show you afterwards, that there's, there's on-project, there's off-project, there's a few water rights that are off-project, that they, if they agree, they have to basically, a lot of them have supplemental wells, is really what it comes down to, they have a lot of, they have ground wells. Now, they can still use their ground wells if they want. Or if they want to enter into the agreement, they have to take, they have to take either, what is, another supplemental in-stream diversion, which a lot of them do, they have to, they have to pick, is essentially what, is essentially what it is. So in, in that case, it's, it's, those, those individuals, if they get into the agreement, if they accept the agreement, they can still, if they think that they're entitled to more, just like I said, they can still adjudicate. But this gives them a set amount of water for their historic consumptive use. But it's a little bit different for the off-project than the on-project. The, the bottom line is, is that we can give them a delivery right, which is not, it is, I agree with you, it is not the same as a clear bare title to water. It's not the same. But anybody who is on a project, that, it isn't, it isn't that clear. You, you don't have bare legal title to that water, it's a huge re right. In water law, they don't, it's not like a water right that you apply for all by yourself for a well or for a diversion from a stream. But if those individuals, if they want to accept the delivery right and they feel, and they want to go fight for co-ownership of it, they can do that in this compact, that's a big difference. They can still adjudicate their claims. And I, that's why I don't know how else, that's why it's never going to be considered a taking. There's been nothing that's been taken from them. They get to adjudicate, just like everybody else.
Well, I'll give you a confidence, you can reply back to me on this first.
Certainly, would love to.
Okay, another issue is the, this compact is giving co-ownership of in-stream and public recreation water rights held by Montana Fish, Water, and Parks. That's in the Flathead, it doesn't lie to the community, so a homely issue for me, not for everybody in the room. But it seems to me if they have co-owner, co-ownership of a recreation right in the Flathead River, then they could say whether we can have jet hooks in the Flathead River or how many fishing hooks we can use on our lines. Because if they own that right, they have a right to protect it too, I would think.
The only, the only right that they have, that they can call, they can only call on an irrigation right, number one. It's only going to be on another diversion of that water, it's only irrigation, and that's it. That's it.
You have more, you have more faith in courts tonight?
Well, that's, that's how, that's how the appropriation has been, has been working in the state for some of those.
Why is this your first meeting in two years for the New York constituency, let's say, in Miami, Chad?
Why? Because this is the first time I've been home to have a meeting to talk about the fact that I was sponsoring the compact?
Well, if, if the compact's been going on and you knew this would be a future issue, why did you not speak to your constituents to inform them, you know, have a meeting two years ago? Like you were talking about in two thousand thirteen, the legislators were there and asked, why, why not? What wouldn't have been hurt? We would have been two years advanced with all your knowledge and you had these information meetings about the subject in general.
The revisions to this compact, I didn't know that I could even talk about them until January seventeen. until January 7th, when I got them. I hadn't even found them all in the compact. And I knew what I was looking for, but I didn't know that they were there and hadn't read the entire thing and gone through it all until January 20th, 19 or 20th. So there was nothing, I mean, we could, I was working on the interim committee, it was not done in a vacuum, there was a lot of people, it was televised. We were studying components of the compact. And I don't think that I would have got this much, or this good of attendance if I'd have said, I want to talk about the compact that we killed last session. Because it's currently in negotiation. I, that's why I'm doing this. I'm sorry that I haven't done better. But I, this is the first chance I've been able to come back and talk about the revisions in the compact and educate people about what's in it.
But, you know, it's kind of sad, because this thing has created more animosity towards the people on the reservation than anything in the last 10 years. It splits people and neighbors and opposite directions. It's not that we just kind of disagree, people who are opposite. It's so complex, Chaz. You can't sell it. It's so complex, we can't buy it. If you ask people, how many of you changed your minds since we've heard the dialogue? Were opposite ends on this thing? So it's been, it's a terrible thing. And I'm going to come back to the 1855 treaty, the Article 3. And it says that they have exclusive right on the reservation to fish. And it says, off reservation, they have a right. Common fish, fish in common, off reservation, build a tavern. Go to Black's dictionary, that exclusive meaning, they got a right without asking anything. If you go to Black's dictionary in terms of common fish, it says fishing in another man's water. So if the fish is in another man's water, it's your hidden owner. But that's, that's Article 3.
Sir, all that I can do is give you all of the case law that will guide all of the litigation that will come out of the lack of ratification in this compact. And, you know, I'm doing this because I have read everything and spent hundreds of hours of researching it and trying to get my head around it, coming back to what Dave's point was. I believe that this compact is not going to do what some folks, we're not giving federal jurisdiction over to second pric, because there's an in-stream flow right there. It hasn't happened in Idaho, it hasn't happened in Washington, even though they went about it the wrong way.
We don't feel comfortable.
And I understand that, but I'll tell you what, I'll mark my words. If I'm unsuccessful in the House, and, you know, who knows what's going to happen? The sleeping giant will wake up, all right? When everybody gets their letters in the mail, and everybody has to go retain a lawyer, and everybody's having to do that, that's when, when the train wreck happens, then, you know, it'll happen. So if that's a train wreck, we get a train wreck. Well, I disagree with your premise.
Senator Vincent, I am very respectful of my hand up when people keep yelling out. So I'm going to go ahead and say, Senator Vincent, you are a fabulous dancer, and what a wonderful, entertaining evening we had. However, I respectfully draw attention to the fact that you danced around questions without giving solid answers. And not only that, instead of giving solid answers, you have disrespected other people in this room, including Senator O'Neill, Senator Curtis, Representative Skeets, acting as if you were the all authority, because you happen to have negotiated or not negotiated what you wanted to see happen for your constituents. However, your constituents in this room have said you're not listening to them. So Senator, there are other people who have been following this from the very beginning, including Senator Barrett, who's in leadership. She has not changed her vote. There are a lot of people who are stating, there's not the things that are protecting our state, Montana. They're not protecting their constituents. They're not protecting us, our future, your children, my grandchildren. So I would like to propose that possibly, maybe anything of a debate, where you're willing to answer questions, rather than entertain us by dancing around those questions.
Yes. I'm sorry, you know, that I haven't answered your question the best I can. And I'm sorry if you feel like I disrespected anybody. I can, the only thing that I, that I can say that I am a little bit frustrated with is I tried to have a meeting with my constituents. I've had several different emails, several different letters to the editor, written by several individuals. And I've been trying my best for the last several weeks to provide them information. When I get confronted with, you haven't answered the questions, when I have, I don't know how else to respond. And I apologize if it came across disrespectful. And we have my apology, and that was not my intent. But I've been trying my love of best to provide information, to provide the reasoning, my justification for supporting this compact.
To the Central Committee?
I've been, I don't answer to the Central Committee. I, I.
Then good luck on your next election, Senator. Those are the people who help you, those are your constituents.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I happen to live here in Lake County, I've been here for eight years or so. I'm an retired federal bureaucrat. I've been sued numerous times. I'd just like to say to my senator and my House representative, thank you for having me, hearing us out, hearing folks out, bringing forward all your thoughts on a very difficult topic that ultimately will probably be litigated in a variety of ways. Thank you for having this evening, thanks for your participation.
Thank you.
If you got, it's nine o'clock, and I told them earlier to be here until 8:30. But if I can get, what I promised to everybody that signs up on this sheet, I will provide you every, every piece of information that I can, that I have electronically for you.
If you respond to the emails, please.
I will distribute the information package. So thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.